Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 1st, 2012 Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest. Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Valco.
Mayor.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Conkin.
President.
Alderman Moiseo.
President.
Alderman Beedling.
Mayor.
Alderman Newsome.
President.
We have a quorum. Could you please rise for the moment of silence? And I would ask that you please keep in mind the family of former police chief Bill Bian, his wife Colleen passed away suddenly on Saturday. So please keep them in your hearts and prayers during this moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I don't have too much tonight as far as my comments are concerned, other than we've had a pretty good last couple of weeks here in the city of Waukegan. A lot of events going along with the beautiful weather that we've enjoyed. And it's just nice to have people out and getting involved in the community and having fun. The kite event over the weekend drew a decent-sized crowd. The problem was the wind wasn't there to help, but everybody seemed to have a good time. And again, it was just another beautiful day down at the lake in Waukegan. Today, I was in Chicago and attended several meetings, one of which was the Metro Mayor's Caucus. And one of the speakers today was from the Gaming Commission, one of their enforcement officers. And he was there to speak about what was going on in regards to the video gaming that's moving forward. It's going to be a little while before this happens. They're doing some testing. Right now, I believe there are eight locations across the state of Illinois that have machines installed. And one of them actually is in a bar in Joliet. They have one in Rockford. In fact, I spoke with the mayor of Rockford today. I'm going to go down with and meet him and visit this establishment to take a look and see how things are working there, to see what the numbers are. But I'd like to read to you something that we were handed out today, just to give you a flavor as to what's going on. Customers at Izzy's Place in Joliet got their first taste of video gambling this week. It's one of eight test sites where the technology is being checked for glitches in the final weeks before the state allows video gambling to start for everyone who has a license and the machines. This last Wednesday was the first day of testing at this location, which is, again, Izzy's Place in Joliet. So for six hours, the five machines at Izzy's were busy the whole time, said the owner. One would step out and someone else would come in, another one would step out and someone else would come in. Right now, the state has licensed 341 locations for video gambling, but only a fraction of those are ready to start, Illinois Gaming Board officials said at a board meeting Thursday. Gaming Board Administrator Mark Ostrowski said terminal operators, the companies that actually operate the machines at Izzy's and other locations, have been slow to deliver. We have only one-third of the terminal operators who have their financial information back into the Gaming Board, Ostrowski said. Terminal operators have not coordinated with manufacturers, distributors, to get the machines to the locations. Now, this Izzy's Place had machines since August 1st because it is one of the sites where the testing was to be held, so they were able to get the equipment. Now, he's not allowed to advertise that he has video gambling, though the arrival of the machines at his bar last month was widely known. Word of mouth gets around pretty well when the machines are turned on, he said. Now, a lot of things are going on. They're checking different phone companies as far as the integrity of their systems. They're working with different Internet systems to see how they all work combined with this effort. And it -- Chairman of the Board Jaffe basically said, "We're set to go. The problem we face is that a lot of folks who are saying, 'Go, go, go,' they're not ready yet either." Now, I was really stunned to learn that each one of these units is $25,000. That's not cheap. So it's my assumption that that entry cost, which will be borne, I assume, by the people who are leasing these, is going to be reflected in the cost of the lease to the borrower. Besides our licensing, you're going to have quite an expense. You know, they're still working out the safety in regards to how there's going to be payouts. Apparently, there's going to be a sort of a payout card that's printed out. It will be inserted into another machine that will have the money in it that people will then get paid through. At least, that's how it was described today. I'm assuming that -- well, I will say that the Gaming Commission gentleman did say that it does put, you know, these locations at risk for having quite a bit of money on the premises. They could be -- these devices, these machines could be stolen, just like an ATM, cracked open and the money taken. But hopefully, that won't happen. So we have a lot to learn yet on this situation, and it's going to be, I think it's going to be a couple more months before we start to see these things installed up in Waukegan. But the pure numbers of these devices is very low. The numbers of cities that have signed onto this is low. I don't think we're going to get the numbers that we thought we would get, that we're going to provide the basis for the state's capital program. I just don't think there's going to be enough money coming in. So I hope that while we haven't made a shopping list, I hope a lot of others have one either because I think we're going to be waiting for a lot of that money to make its way into our hands. So we'll have to see how it all rolls out. But I just want to remind everybody that anybody involved in this has to be licensed. And the technical licenses -- for the technical part of this, they also have to be licensed. Anybody servicing these things or servicing the systems has to be licensed through the Gaming Commission. And, you know, like I said, we'll see. We'll see what happens with it. Next, we have audience time. And Chris Blanks, please.
Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. I was in Chicago myself on yesterday. Mayor, on Sunday afternoon, nearly 1,000 people, practically all of them African-Americans, answered Ed Gardner's call to rally at 95th and Western Protest to protest a continued lack of black workers on construction sites in Chicago. And I echo those sentiments here in Lake County and in the Waukegan area. So I was there yesterday to participate in that. And let me just kind of reiterate, if I can, what I had said on last week. We can't sit by idly, or at least I won't, and to allow an increased presence of -- let me -- so nobody can misunderstand or misinterpret what I said. We won't sit by idly and watch an increased presence of overzealous police officers in the community without their first being a playing field that is level for the inclusion of everybody to have a fair shot at jobs in the community. We're not bashing everybody, all your police officers here, but we won't have police officers who are going to come into the community and write tickets for young people for going up a one-way alley on a bicycle. We're not hearing that. Or tickets for parking too close to the yellow. Not in the yellow, too close to the yellow. Having no front license plate on the car for the citizens when the police leave the parking lot of his own facility at the police department, where personal plates of officers have no front license plates. So we won't tolerate that in the first ward or any ward. I would fight the first ward, Alderman, and anybody who will allow this to happen because we need to have a fair and a level playing field for inclusions on these jobs so young people can work. I often hear people say that talking about there being intimidation in the first ward. And if that be the case, I'll put it like this. I remember a self-serving political official at one time who was saying things and making accusations, saying that they are weapons of mass destruction in Iraq. These are the calls that I'm getting from my Defense Department and CIA. But we come to find out there was no weapons of mass destruction. And just the same, I've never, out of my 10 years being here at the city council, seen one citizen come forth to make a complaint about the intimidation in the first ward. And if there is, we don't place the whole community under arrest. You find out the one that's committing the crime, and if there's intimidation going on, you put them in jail. But we don't want to see our community, our first ward, go back to what it was under the first administration of that type of excess. Okay. Now...
Point of order? Yes? We're well beyond three minutes. Are we over three minutes? I'm sorry. Chris, could you wrap it up for us, please?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So anyway, I'm pretty much wrapped up here for now, but I'll be back. But I will say, if you want to deal with issues in the community, then hold ward meetings, organize your community, give your citizens a first chance to be the first responders of issues in the community. Because we have citizens, we shouldn't have to always call on the police. There are men and there are people in the community who would be more than willing to step up to the plate to do what needs to be done. So it's as an Alderman and anybody else, organize your community first. Give them a chance to be the first responders of intimidation on either side, whether it be police or whether it be citizens. Thank you for the extra minutes.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate it. You know, there's one thing that I forgot to mention.
Your Honor, we want to make sure that everyone else who comes and speak today is allowed to exceed the three-minute mark. We do not want to...
That's it tonight?
No, Your Honor.
I'm sorry, what?
This has been the second week in a row where you have given latitude to Mr. Blanks, and there are complaints filed that he's the only one who gets that type of latitude.
That's not true. So go back and watch the meetings, and you can see that I try to give people a chance to express themselves. Sometimes it runs over three minutes, sometimes it doesn't.
Oh, Your Honor.
As the chair of this meeting, if I feel that somebody's making a point, they need a little extra time to do so, I try to give people latitude across the board.
And I understand that. But it has been very consistent.
Thank you, Alderman. We're next to our...
It is consistent, Your Honor. It is consistent that you allow Mr. Blanks...
We'll take a motion by the minutes. Item motion...
You can go on. We can both talk at the same time, Your Honor.
Alderman, please.
Thank you.
Cease.
It has been consistent that you've allowed Mr. Blanks to continue to speak beyond the three minutes.
Yeah, Alderman, point of order, please.
So thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. My comments have been noted for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, we have the minutes before us. Take a motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, to approve the minutes of September 17th, 2012, regular meeting and committee of the whole, September 24th, 2012. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Next, we need to move up. Actually, we need to go into executive session because we have an attorney here that's working with us today. We don't want to keep any longer than we really need to. Take a motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May, to go into executive session for reasons of imminent litigation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Should take about 10 minutes, I think. Tom?
Robert Edwards is right.
Discussing labor negotiations, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. I apologize, ladies and gentlemen, I forgot we had two topics. So it's totally on me. This won't take long, maybe five to 10 more minutes.
Bob, the mayor, okay on this one?
Yes. Yeah, thanks.
Your Honor? We go to Labor, we lay...
Okay. Motion to -- oh, one of these restrooms. We're going to take a couple seconds recess here real quick. It's cool, yeah.
Good job, bro. Seth.
You all right?
Yeah, we're all right.
But not the appointments, though. You want to do the appointments?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
If they don't?
That's fine. Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
We're good.
Motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, we're back on the agenda. We have the minutes. Now, we will go to resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. I do believe that we are going to move into the omnibus mode at this time for the agenda. Corporation Council, please lead us through it.
On behalf of the chair, I'll accept a motion to dispose of items this evening by omnibus vote. There'll be an opportunity, of course, for Alderman to remove items before that vote actually occurs. So first, the motion to use the omnibus procedure.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Thank you.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Alderman Beedling. Can I make a question to Corporation Council? We can still pull items out, correct?
Absolutely.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Again, on behalf of the chair, I then ask that each Alderman review the remaining items on tonight's agenda, and please indicate if there are items that would be best handled with discussion. If so, please indicate the items.
Corporation Council, it would be Judiciary Report, item C, and Finance Committee Report, item A.
Very good.
Sure, Finance.
Are there any other items that...
Well, there's one more, maybe a point of order, is that appointments to the Waukegan Economic Development Advisory Board, that is a change in the name. And then, the ordinance to change the name is the last one. Don't we have to establish the change first and then appoint the members, or does that make a difference?
I would say that we probably would want to establish the name change first.
So I just want to make sure we do it the right way. So item F would have to come up first before we...
Alderman, that would be appropriate, except if we're going to vote all these items at one time.
It doesn't matter.
Really matter.
Okay.
Okay, so we're leaving Judiciary, C, and Finance, A?
For each one, you read it through, and then we do a roll call for all of them. So, yes, or do you want item B taken out? Alderman Newsome would like item B under Judiciary.
B and...
Yes.
Very fine. Okay, then. The following item...
Judiciary, that was never -- that was not discussed. That was just held in...
No, we... So item B under Judiciary did not come out of committee to be voted on?
No, there was only one thing in committee, that was C.
No, we voted on it.
That was a special judiciary.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
All right.
Judiciary, C.
I don't see what's special.
Okay.
So the following items will then be the subject of the omnibus vote this evening. Item six, appointments to the Waukegan Economic Development Advisory Board. Thomas O'Connell, Megan DeMaya, Ruth...
Wernma.
Wernma, Linda Paul, John Anaramiun, Jean Pogue, Sanford Stein. Secondly, we'd be approving Andrea Dank to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Moving into items under seven, the Public Works Committee Report, A, award the bid for the sanitary lift station water treatment plant to the lowest bidder, Campanella &amp; Sons, not to exceed $401,700, as well as an amount not to exceed $24,960 for construction services for the project to Baxter &amp; Woodman, total project cost being $426,660. Under Judiciary Committee, item A, approval of a memorandum of understanding for 2404 Western concerning Habitat for Humanity. Items B and C have been pulled for this purpose of this vote. Item A under Finance is also pulled for purposes of this vote. Under Labor Relations, to approve the property and casualty insurance program for November 1st, 2012 to October 31st, 2013. Under Reports and Communications, there would be an estimate on behalf of the council that the aggregate levy in this year would be $23 million. That is simply an estimate at this time, there's no binding nature of that number. Under Ordinances and Resolutions, under A, resolution authorizing the purchase through the NSA program of 28 North Elmwood. Under B, authorizing the sale of 1630 Greenwood. Under C, this would be authorizing the purchase, again, under NSP program, of 221 South Victory. There then follows, under D, an ordinance updating our current watershed development ordinance to keep it in compliance. And then, E, a resolution authorizing the purchase, again, through the NSP program of 850 Adams. Lastly, an ordinance renaming the Renaissance Commission to the Waukegan Economic Development Advisory Board. On behalf of the chair, we'll need a motion to approve all of those items.
Motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman May -- I'm sorry, Valco. Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Now, we'll go back to those items that were held out. The first item that was held out was under Judiciary Committee Report. Alderman May, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Judiciary Committee met last Monday. The first item is an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter III of the Waukegan City Code. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, repealing and replacing Chapter III alcoholic beverages of the Waukegan City Code. There was three major changes made to Chapter III. The Chapter III was being addressed as an overhaul of the whole city code, but there were also some specifics. The three major changes was that Basset training was added to all types of liquor licenses. It's training for people who serve alcohol. We added two classes of BYO licenses, a BYO-1 and a BYO-2 license, three licenses for BYO, two licenses for the BYO-2, which is for small theaters, think clockwise, to allow them to have a BYO permit during their performances only. The third major change was the B1 type license, an increase of the number of licenses is currently at three. We're increasing the number to 11, but there is a restriction that has been placed upon the square footage of the establishments qualifying for the B1 to 3,500 square feet or less. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I...
Yes, Alderman Rivera.
With the B1 license, were there any restrictions on sale of food products, or did that come up in any discussion in regards to that type of license?
Um, I'm not...
You know, where, like, for example, the old 7-Eleven where, you know, they wanted to have so much percentage of food groceries?
Yeah, there is. Ann-Lynn can come up and address. She...
All right.
This license, we already have three in existence. They are for mini-mart-type operations.
Okay.
And so they already have the ability to sell items other than alcoholic beverages. In fact, it's four businesses where their main business is something other than the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Okay.
So, yes, they can sell any other type of food products or anything like that. The alcohol is limited to no more than 10% of the Flora area for retail display, and no more than 20% of their grocery receipts for alcohol.
Now, is that -- and how many licenses are?
Right now, there are three, and...
We didn't expand on that?
No, Alderman May did.
To 11, from 2011.
Yes, that's correct. And we have a waiting list of individuals, so that's mostly the difference.
Do we know how many we have on that waiting list?
Yes, we have six on the waiting list right now.
Okay.
And so that would put it up to nine, and then there are two others that apparently are also ready to apply as well.
Very well. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I have one thing that I want to remind, and again, since we're dealing with the Chapter III on the alcoholic beverages. I had talked a couple meetings ago about this need to create festival zones, and for the Liquor Commission to be able to define those areas so that we could, you know, have big events downtown, and people can carry in plastic cups from approved vendors, a beer or something like that. And we haven't seen that, but I would like to encourage the Chairman of Judiciary possibly to look into seeing if we might be able to do that in the next couple of meetings that she does hold.
Absolutely, Mayor. We discussed it briefly at our last meeting. We just didn't have time to get it into the ordinance. We figured we'd get Chapter III passed, and then we'll add the festival. At the next meeting, we're going to address it.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
No.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Next item I have is the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve zoning calendar number 2371, the conditional use permit for 157 car parking lot in the downtown lakefront overlay district. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I'll vote aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Before I vote, I need to ask a new question.
Fast. Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
No.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Your Honor, if the clerk would please put me down as a not voting on this subject. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, understood. You passed on it, correct? Yes. Or, no, actually, the right would be abstain.
Abstain, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Alderman Cunningham has abstained from this. Yeah, thank you.
That includes the Advisory Council.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Finance Committee Report. Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening, 6 o'clock. One item on the agenda, item A, a motion to renew the contract with Magrile Woods LLC in an amount not to exceed $96,000 through November 30th, 2013, for lobbying and issue advocacy services. Budget Code 100-103024436. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Comments or questions? Alderman Beedling.
I'm going to vote in the affirmative for this because apparently we have to hire someone to represent our interest in Springfield, which, as Alderman Tempest has said in the past, what do we have a state senator and state representative for? They have never once, since I've been here in 16, 17 months, visited the city, asked us, "What are our problems? How can they help us out?" They seem to busy their time between Springfield and when they're accomplished that, I don't know what they do after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
No.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. We did not get in the -- I'm sorry.
Labor Relations. I just can I just give...
Oh, yes, Labor Relations. I'm going to hand this off to Alderman Moiseo.
A couple issues, and, well, one issue on Labor Relations, we didn't put it on here, recommendations from the Labor Relations Committee. By November 1st, we have to set the salaries for the mayor, the clerk, and the treasurer. We have to do it 180 days before the next term, before they take office. So we have to set that November 1st. We have one more council meeting to do that. We could have a committee of the whole. There's -- Corporation Council says we can't discuss it in executive session. Doesn't make a difference to me where I discuss it, but some other Alderman may want to know where we can discuss what. So we need to get that clarified on whether or not we can discuss it in executive session. Again, it doesn't make a difference to me, but the Labor Relations Committee made a recommendation just to bring it to the council as a whole instead of -- because there's going to be some discussion on it. Doesn't make a difference to me where I discuss it, but some other Alderman may want to know where we can discuss what, so we need to get that clarified on whether or not we can discuss it in executive session. Again, it doesn't make a difference to me, but the Labor Relations Committee made a recommendation just to bring it to the council as a whole instead of, because there's going to be some discussion on it, so why not discuss it with nine instead of just five? So, we have to do that before November 1st, either the next council meeting or have a committee of the whole meeting, whatever this body chooses to do. I guess I'll sort of take the charge in it, because I'm the Vice Chairman of Labor Relations, and obviously, the mayor has...
I have to recuse myself.
He recused himself from that, obviously. Okay? So, that is where we stand on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Now, we do have a couple of items we need to vote on. New business recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approval of payroll dated October 1st, 2012, in the amount of $1,298,156.17. Motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, approval of bills dated October 1st, 2012, in the amount of $980,926.8. Motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Beedling, to approve all block parties. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item D, motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsome, to approve a raffle sale application for Greenwood Elementary School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Newsome, to approve the Halloween trick-or-treat hours on October...
Not second, I almost said...
Will it second that? Okay. Alderman May? To second the approved Halloween trick-or-treat hours on October 28th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Next, we have Alderman's time. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just want to recognize, we, the seventh board in the city of Waukegan, has a whole lost a very special person last week, Jan Caesar. Sorry. She was a teacher at Greenwood School, she taught CCD at St. Anastasia Church, she coached Girl Scouts, school board member, Eucharistic minister. She was a big, big part of our Waukegan community, and I just wanted to recognize and send prayers to her family, and we're really, we really lost a special woman there. That's all I have.
Alderman Velco.
Fast.
Alderman Rivera.
Real quick, we met this week with Organic Matters, and the meeting went well. Organic Matters is hiring a company to deal with odorant materials, and the materials, actually, that was really creating the stench was not the vegetables and fruits that they were bringing in there, was the grass that they were, grass clippings. And as you know, when grass clippings are sitting in a pile for a long time, even before they come to the site at Organic Matters, they create a big stink. So anyways, they have ceased having these grass clippings come in, and actually, you know, the smells are a lot better. I mean, I don't even smell anything anymore, so they are definitely trying to make sure that these smells aren't creating a big problem. So, I just want to let everyone know that the meeting went well, and these issues are being taken care of. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Two things. One, this is a question to Chief, Fire Chief. Fire Chief, the, there was a complaint that came in about burning of the leaves in the, inside those, I don't know, what are those little things called?
Backyard fire pit.
The little pits, the ones you buy?
Yeah.
Is that, are we enforcing, are we enforcing a no-leave burning when they have that? When they're burning leaves or wood? Because I see a lot of people doing it. It was a complaint that come in, I really didn't know how to answer that.
The only thing that's been referred to that would be lumber, not construction lumber of firewood, and not seeds, not anything. We have a no-leave permit for...
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
Little fire pits, little fire places, that would be for split wood, that is one trouble, but it's not for leaves or anything, or...
And Chief, and, not Chief, I mean, DC, we are enforcing that, correct? From that standpoint? All right. That was the one question. Number two, I know this has been on everybody's mind, it definitely is on mine, I kind of went to the little meeting they had today, the YMCA closing.
Oh, yeah.
The YMCA closing. I don't know what is going on, how it is going on, whatever have you, but I don't know if Dan Moran is still here, I hope he is. If not, David, please make sure we get this out. I think it's about time that that board, the board of the YMCA, the CEO, the new one, not the one who left, the new one, either come to this, to this city, or Vernon Hills, wherever they're going to do it, and have a meeting so we can, a come-to-Jesus meeting, that's what we want to call it. Because this is just way too many questions and hanging chads that are out there. The way this was done, it was just terrible. A message in the newspaper to tell us you're going to be closing November 1st. And as a member, as a member there, and I'm just devastated. And the meeting, I didn't, I don't know if it was called a meeting, but I think it was called just to get together of members who's kind of lost in the fog right now. They want to know what's going on. And talking to the current CEO, who's only been there three months, so he just, he must have took the job just, not just because, but he's probably trying to help, but per him, they would need $5 to $8 million. I don't know how $5 to $8 million come from two months ago. This had to be something they've known a while back. Then it was said that they went out and reached out to other partners to try to do a partnership. I've spoken to, I saw the mayor's comments. Ray, I know you're very involved around, I don't know if they reached out to you, they haven't come to this council, I don't know if they've been to Vernon Hills or whatever have you, but I can tell you this, they need to come in, and I'm asking, matter of fact, I'm demanding, as a member and as a leader of this community, that that board and that CEO sit down with its members in a meeting and lay it out on the line. This is ridiculous. It's ridiculous that this has come like this. This is an institution that's been around this community, I mean, if you, I'm 46, if you don't, you, Y is just the Y. We don't even call the building down on Genesee across from Shiloh, we call it the old south-side Y. Now, that is, that's an institution. You can't tell me you can go $5 million in debt and not say anything to nobody. Something's wrong there. I don't know what it is, and I'm not accusing them of anything, but I know the way they handled this was not the, was not the best way to handle it for the institution of who they are. I think that's my biggest complaint. Things happen, we understand that, but this right here, the way you handled this, that's not an embarrassment to the Y, that's embarrassment to everybody who's a part of this. So, as a councilman, I am demanding that they come in and have a meeting and speak out, and as Commissioner Cowell always say, a come-to-Jesus meeting. Real quick, those are my comments, and thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, can I make a quick comment on that?
Yes, Alderman.
You know, I was involved with the YMCA for three or four years, I chaired the Strong Kids Campaign, and, you know, unfortunately, nationally, the YMCA is in trouble nationally. And it's unfortunate, you know, it's, obviously, it's all economics. I mean, they've tried for the past few years to try to even, you know, build a relationship with us and the city, when they tried to, you know, open up a, you know, like a gym, you know, over here with the old YMCA there, but that didn't work out. But again, it's, what happened here was the emergence of health clubs, and that's what, that's what's killing the YMCA, health clubs. You know, we have a wonderful facility, the Waukegan, the Park District, when they created the, you know, the huge Fieldhouse Center, I mean, that's, you know, it's too bad, but that's, that really hurt the YMCA as well, so. But again, you know, it's sad, because the YMCA really, really, when we'd raise these funds was strictly to provide for the underprivileged that couldn't afford, you know, these swimming lessons, Camp Jordan, you know, and things like that. So, it's unfortunate that a great institution like that in the city of Waukegan has died, but it's tough. This is a national, this was a national decision when it came to the, to our Vernon Hills and the YMCA.
You know, one thing, too, that we got to remember, that it's happening in Vernon Hills as well, they're closing out there. And so, it's not just Waukegan, it is, it is a systemic failure of this organization financially. But, you know, one of the things, when they called me Friday, I was completely, no one had called me, no one had tried to get together with us to try to talk about this, we just learned about it at Friday afternoon. But I do want to let everybody know that we did contact Workforce Investment. We've set up appointments out there with the Workforce Investment people to go and try to help the people that work for the Y to find jobs. Noel was kind enough, she's a member of the Workforce Investment Board, and she reached out for us to get this set up. And while I don't want to give any details, it's not a fait accompli, it's not completely done, there is the chance that there may be an outside Y organization that could expand its scope. That, I mean, it doesn't mean they're going to come riding it on a white horse and rescue it, but there is some chance that someone may be able to do that. But it was surprising to me, and it was disappointing, but, you know, they said that so many of the members were subsidized by the YMCA. That's what really, really hurt them, was the fact that so many of the people could not pay the full amount. I know that a gentleman called me back in April, he was recovering from some, an accident, and he needed to be able to work out, and he couldn't afford to go there. And they said that that's one of their big problems, was that a large number of their clientele could not pay, and they were subsidized, and it's unfortunate. But let's not give up completely, it's not totally over yet, let's wait and see if someone else decides to expand their territory, and maybe this, maybe we'll be saved, but, you know, for right now, this is the situation, as Sam described it, it's disappointing. Next public comment, please.
Alderman Conken.
Yeah, I'd just like to say welcome to the new members of the Waukegan Economic Development Advisory Board. There were a number of them in the audience tonight, and I'm sorry that we went to omnibus for that session, because it would have been nice to meet them and at least recognize them, and say hello to the ones that were in the audience. They bring a lot of experience, whether it's from architecture, planning, real estate, so this board should be a real big asset to the city of Waukegan, and welcome aboard. That's my comments, thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
You couldn't have a better segue, Alderman. I'd like to thank the former members of the Renaissance Commission for all of their hard work at the community hall. I voiced my displeasure with how this was handled. I don't think it was handled the correct way, maybe sold the right way, explained the right way, whatever it may be. The former chairman of the Renaissance Commission, Mr. Rodriguez, was in the audience today, he's since left, but I wanted to apologize to the people of the Renaissance Committee for the way it was handled. I'd also like to thank them for their years of service, and their hard work, and their efforts in the Waukegan, and try to make things better. I understand what this new board is for, but we, as a city, did not handle this the way it should have been handled, in my opinion. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
I'd like to make a comment about the Insurance Committee. It's a real exciting committee. It meets twice a year, right? Twice. Twice a year. I've learned a lot. My colleague, Alderman Cunningham, there is very knowledgeable about insurance, and he always makes the meetings interesting, and I appreciate serving with him on that committee. The YMCA, I think to a certain degree, from what I've read, they've lost their Christian roots. Perhaps a Salvation Army would be able to take it over. They operate, their head guy gets paid $13,000 a year, truly a benevolent organization. And the YMCA is no different than our school district, not for being able to dig into the taxpayers' pockets every time they need money, they'd be closing their doors also, and I think we're going to see a lot more of that as the years go by. Thank you.